Hey, good afternoon. I'm Stacy Spivey with Lauren Coleman, Eric Kildon and Monique Robinson.
And welcome to the 4 to 5 weather you're watching on air, online, WFMY News 2 app, Firestick or Roku, or even on our Facebook page where a lot of people are buzzing about the mask mandate. It's been nearly 24 hours since Guilford County Commissioners voted to lift the mask mandate effective immediately.
As a result, businesses are now able to implement their own mandates if needed. WFMY News 2's Jenna Corzina takes a closer look at what some larger venues are planning since this vote. Hey Jenna.
Guilford County has a lot of attractions and venues that draw big crowds, especially downtown. But with this new mask mandate being lifted, what does that mean if you want to go to a show or concert or take your kid to a museum? Right here in downtown Greensboro, we have a lot of attractions, including the Tanger Center. And then through LeBauer Park, you have the Greensboro Children's Museum. Here's a breakdown at how these venues will move forward now that the mask mandate is lifted. Masks will not be required at the Tanger Center or the Greensboro Coliseum Complex unless they are requested by the artist or tour. Masks are no longer required, just recommended at the Greensboro Science Center. At the Greensboro Children's Museum, masks will still be required for those three and up regardless of vaccination status. As far as reaction goes, it's mixed.
I think it's great. I think it's great that the mask mandate's been lifted.
We're all in this together. We're all community. We're all Guilford County and we need to think about what we're doing to other people.
I haven't seen very many wearing them.
Yeah, we haven't really seen people wearing them anyway. Like even when it's been required indoors.
Again, Guilford County Commissioners voted last night to remove and lift the requirement that masks be worn inside all buildings in Guilford County. Now, if you're unsure of the place that you want to go has a mask requirement or not, you can always just double check before you head out the door. And coming up at 6:00 on WFMY News 2, we're going to hear more reaction from the community and how they feel about this lift.
Jenna, thank you. Now, the changes come as Guilford County hospitalizations continue to show a leveling off here. Right now, there are 49 coronavirus patients in county hospitals. It's in line with all of the numbers from the past week, but you can see they're slightly higher than the numbers we saw about two weeks ago. At one point, there were just 35 patients receiving treatment. All of our recent numbers are still much better than they were just a month and a half ago when hospitals were treating upwards of 148 patients. A reminder, the gaps are the days that the county doesn't report this number typically over the weekend.
Well, many of you are sounding off on social media about this, of course. Sharon says fortunately, many businesses will still require them. And Ramona says, I guess we will wait and see. Most people weren't wearing them anyway. Aveline says, so backwards, I'm still wearing mine because people are still getting COVID. I know about 15 in the last week and they didn't even know they had it until they went to the doctor. Now they have to tell the ones they were around and so on and so forth. Not worth it. Betty Ray says, better to have it lifted than to wear them improperly. If you feel the need to wear one, go for it. And if you plan on wearing one, cover your nose. Having it under your nose is just like going without one.
With the possibility of seeing more people's faces again, we are checking in with Blanca Cobb about reading facial expressions. So Blanca, how does reading a full facial expression impact communication?
When you can read someone's and see someone's full facial expression, you decrease the likelihood of that you're guessing what you're seeing. You can actually see how they're feeling. Just imagine a puzzle. When you have all of the pieces of the puzzle, you can see the complete picture. If there are pieces missing from that puzzle, you're trying to guess. When you misread somebody's facial expression, then that really can hinder communication and interaction.
So what are the differences in some of the most common facial expressions?
Well, we're looking at the lower face now. So with sadness, what happens in the corners of your mouth will come down. That lip can pout out. When somebody's angry, they can have a tight, straight line. They compress their lips. Surprise, that jaw falls straight down. With fear, it goes like this. It's a little awkward how your mouth moves but towards your ears. Disgust, sometimes with some people, the upper lip can actually curl up when they're showing a face of disgust. And contempt, this is the only unilateral expression, and that means that one corner of your mouth comes up in a smirky smile.
Very interesting. So what can we read in the lower half of someone's face to know that they're not comfortable or they want some more personal space?
Pay attention to their lips and jaw. When it comes to the jaw, you will see a tightening and sometimes you will see this muscle right here at the lower corners, one or both, they'll actually pulsate. Lips will tighten, they'll compress. Some people will actually bite their lip, they'll twist their lips, and they'll make all these exaggerated faces with their lips. So if you get a sense that you're too close, you can actually take a step back, give them some space. And if you see relaxation in their face, more than likely, it's because you've now respected their personal space that they can relax and that decreases all the muscle tension in their face.
All right, some great pointers we could definitely all use during these crazy times. Thank you so much, Blanca. And you can find the full interview on our website. Go to wfmynews2.com.
Well, walking outside today, temperatures are a little bit warmer as compared to yesterday. But one thing that hasn't changed, these beautiful blue skies. This is a look at Way Forest. As you can see, the oasis of blue in the sky. The temperature trend over the last several hours. I had someone recently message me, kind of confused. When we talk about the low temperature, when do you feel it? Is that technically Monday or is it Tuesday? Well, it's a little bit of both. It was chilly last night, but the low temperature is in the morning hours of your Tuesday. You can see these low 30s. They haven't really changed much going from all the way around 3:00 a.m. through 7:00 a.m. The temperatures stayed in those low 30s. Didn't drop down to 32, but 33 is still a cold number. But we soared into the 60s by the afternoon. Nearly a 30-degree jump from 4:00 a.m., 5:00 a.m. timeframe all the way until 3:00 p.m. Within 12 hours, we jumped 30 degrees. Definitely enough of a temperature change to change your weather gear. So when you started out the day probably bundled up with maybe a scarf and a jacket, and by the afternoon, you could have loosened up the scarf a little bit, let go of the jacket, same forecast in store for tomorrow. More 60s, even maybe some 70s in some locations. That temperature trend on the rise. So you can see Wednesday, Thursday, 70s. But take a look at this 30-degree, 20-degree dip from Thursday to Friday. It's going to get chilly out there. More details on it coming up.
Well, the temperatures may be warming up, but they'll cool back down just in time for WFMY News 2's Winter Fest.
Opening night is Friday night, and here's a live look at the rink as the final preparations are being made.
Looks very nice, very skateable for opening night. Pay only $5 to skate. For each ticket sold, $1 is donated to Second Harvest Food Bank.
Or you can donate canned goods and get a voucher for a free Chick-fil-A sandwich. Now you're talking. If you bring five or more canned goods, you'll be entered into a drawing to win a Chick-fil-A gift basket.
Come celebrate with us at WFMY News 2's Winter Fest from 7:00 to 9:00 o'clock. We'll be right back. Within the hour, you're probably heading home from work or taking the kids to practice and likely you'll be driving in the dark. AAA warns drivers, the end of daylight saving time yields dangerous driving. Yeah, it's darker earlier and you're feeling drowsier and it might be harder to see road signs or worse, people along the road. That's why WFMY News 2's Megan Malaris is verifying an important reminder about North Carolina crosswalks.
That's how it means it is time to verify. Stop breaking the law. Stop at crosswalks. That is the message from North Carolina law enforcement agencies who report about 300 pedestrian collisions with cars each year in our state. I recently posted this picture on my Facebook page, one of many crosswalks nearby where I see driver after driver fail to stop for people waiting to cross. Viewer Otto said lots of people probably see the lines of the crosswalk as decorative and have no clue what the sign means. But another viewer privately messaged me questioning whether drivers even need to yield if there's no intersection. So let's verify. Our sources are the Watch for Me NC organization, Officer A.D. Reed with the Greensboro Police Department's Safety Unit, and North Carolina's Pedestrian Laws, statute 20-173 to 174. The laws vary slightly by state, but in North Carolina, it is clear, in places where traffic control signals are not in place or operating, the driver must yield the right of way to a pedestrian crossing the road as long as it's within any marked crosswalk or within any unmarked crosswalk at or near an intersection.
You're required by law as an operator of a motor vehicle, so a car, motorcycle, an RV, whatever it may be, even a bicyclist who's traveling down the road, they have to stop and they have to let that person cross the road. They have to yield to pedestrians.
Crosswalks don't all look the same. Marked crosswalks have two parallel white lines or a series of white blocks running across the street. Mid-block crosswalks are like the one in my photo, in the middle of a block, not an intersection. And unmarked crosswalks are whenever a sidewalk ends at an intersection and continues at the other side, implying an invisible crosswalk at the intersection. But what if the pedestrian is still waiting to cross the road at a crosswalk? Do cars have to yield? Yes.
If it's not safe for that person to step out in the road, they're going to be stuck on that sidewalk for a long time. So if they're on at the entrance to it, so on the sidewalk part, that's still considered part of the roadway itself.
So yes, we verified it is the law in North Carolina and many other states for drivers to yield to pedestrians at crosswalks, even if the crosswalk isn't at an intersection and even if the pedestrian is still waiting on the sidewalk to cross. Conversely, a pedestrian who is trying to cross outside of a crosswalk, like on a highway, has to yield to the car. In those cases, Officer Reed said drivers should still try to yield even if the pedestrian is in the wrong. With your verify, I'm Megan Malaris.
If you see a claim or story that needs to be verified, just send a selfie, video or short paragraph to verify@wfm.com.
So this is one of the most unique ways to present classic Broadway tunes that I've ever seen. I spoke with Stephen Hale about the Triad Pride Acting Company's new show, Broadway Our Way. Take a look. Stephen, so I first read about this and I thought, well, this is different and I love it. It's just kind of a reversal of roles here. Tell me how all this came about.
We got the idea of doing Broadway Our Way from the Broadway community. They've been doing Broadway backwards or Broadway miscast for years. And we thought this was a perfect fit for the Triad Pride Acting Company where we can take Broadway songs that are typically performed by men and have them performed by women and songs performed typically by women and have them performed by men and do a little gender switch, which makes it very realistic for the gay lesbian community.
So when you first started talking about doing this, how was the response? Did you get a lot of folks that were signing up or how did it go?
There are some wonderful songs that are out there that in a real-life performance, you would never get to perform. And so this is a great opportunity for performers to sing those iconic songs that they'll never be able to perform during a real performance. So there's been a lot of interest in the show.
What do you want people to walk away with from this? Because I mean, this could, this is the type of thing that can make a statement, but can also be very fun and playful.
There are stories to be told from different points of view. The cast is a nice diverse cast and the stories that are told are very moving. And it's very powerful to have women sing about storming a castle or performing as the king. And it's very moving to have men singing about, you know, their mothers or being in a relationship. So it's a different way to interpret the songs that most people are very familiar with from one point of view, and it gives you a different take.
This is super interesting and unique. Thanks for taking time with us today. Good luck with this project. All right, so I was just asking Stacy real quick, I know Lauren and I had done, that's why I asked you real fast. So all three of us have done theater at some point in our lives. And one thing I will say is that there are some songs that you would hear, like for you guys, you heard a man sing that song, but you loved that song and you know that traditionally, you're not going to play that role probably. And vice versa, same thing with me. And so I think it's interesting from a performer's standpoint. He said a lot of their actors want to do this so they can sing a song that they know they'll never normally get to.
I was going to say the same thing from an actor's perspective. It's just always fun and challenging to try something different or something, a different role that you've never played before. So that's great for them.
Yeah, I actually played a little boy once. Yeah, I was in the play Oliver and so, and I was just part of like the cast. But all of us kids were part, like all the little boys in the orphanage. So I was a little boy and I had dirt all over, fake dirt all over my face.
Oh, yes. That's such a cute play. I know once I, when I was trying out for the play, I didn't pay enough attention in the very beginning. It was Our Town, which is a famous, famous play. And when I looked at the casting, it said I was the stage manager. And at first I was like, oh, and then I realized, no, wait, that's the lead.
That's the role. You were like...
And I didn't realize, I thought for half a second that I was literally the stage manager.
I could see you looking at the listing.
I did. And it was like a millisecond, because that's what I was trying out for. But when you see that up there, you're like, man, I'm managing the stage. All right, Monique, take it away. We're talking too long.
I actually was in two notable plays. I know I did Cinderella and I also did Annie. I was in a lot of plays growing up, but I specifically love musicals because I love to dance. And you might have to dance because the temperatures are getting cold. You could dance a little bit to warm things up. By this afternoon, temperatures got into some 60s. 64 was the high in Greensboro, tying Winston-Salem. Burlington got to beat us up to 65 and so did Ashboro at 66. High pressure is to blame for this warmer weather or in my case, the good weather, warmer temperatures right around where we should be for this time of year. As that high pressure continues to move east, we are on the backside. We get this return flow. Winds coming out of the south and west, which increases temperatures and increases dew points just a little bit. So today, tomorrow and the next day, we'll feel the warmth. Cold front does make its way through and that's what changed the game by the weekend. I mean, we're talking cold weather returns back to the triad. A real big dip in temperatures. So we're all going to feel the warmth over the next couple of days. We're all going to feel the big chill after that. 40 degrees for tonight, a little bit warmer as compared to yesterday. But as you can see on that seven-day, between Thursday and Friday, a 20-degree dip in high temperatures by the afternoon, where certainly enough, all going to be talking about how cold it is. And Tuesday, we'll barely get out of the 40s.
So usually when we run this animation, you think of a new gadget you can play with, but today, we're actually talking food, but it's still techie here. An Israeli startup company is serving up 3D-printed beef. It is a plant-based substitute made of soy and pea protein, chickpeas, beetroot, coconut fat and nutritional yeasts. The company says this will expand meat alternative products, which have typically been limited to ground beef dishes in the past. Company plans to build five factories in the coming years, including one in the U.S.
Interesting. We were curious, how do you 3D print a steak? 3D printed steaks are all about customizing. Based on what the purchaser wants, the company can select the cut of steak, its weight fat percentage and protein before printing. The company Redefined Meat has an industrial-sized 3D printer that creates cuts of meats by printing three materials made from plant-based ingredients. Very interesting. Well, if you'd rather have a burger and fries, today's the perfect day because it's National Fast Food Day. I asked you on my Facebook page, when do you like to eat fast food and why? Paulette says, when she's tired and doesn't feel like cooking. Don't we all? James writes, at 1:00 a.m. with a glass of wine while I catch up on Real Housewives. Curtis is ready for a burger anytime, but Tom thinks fast food is garbage. Meanwhile, Tammy, I think we need to catch up, there we go. Tammy loves burgers, onion rings and fries. And look he who commented as well. Lauren Coleman, when I've had a long day at work and I don't feel like cooking or washing dishes.
That was me twice last week. I was in that Chick-fil-A drive-thru after work.
Can't go wrong with that.
Yeah.
You know, and people always say, what's your favorite? There is no way that I can narrow, because there's different reasons I like different franchises, you know?
Yeah. Like I love Taco Bell when I'm in the mood for tacos and then Chick-fil-A if I want a chicken sandwich.
I think Chick-fil-A though is my, is my favorite. I think like it's my go-to. If I want fast food, obviously not on Sundays, but I love, I just love everything on the menu.
Yeah, the sauces.
Yeah, the sauces are key.
I bought, I bought the bottle from Target so I can eat the Chick-fil-A sauce at home.
So I had never had the Chick-fil-A sauce until my twins started working there. And then they brought home one of those bottles, because I always got Buffalo, that was like my, you know, me, I like all the hot sauce. So they brought this to, Dad, you have to try it. I said, okay, I'll try it. Done. Amazing. I eat that on other things that we cook. I put the Chick-fil-A sauce on that.
I used to take the, keep the packet so if I made fries at home, then I could dip them in there.
So good.
It is really, really good stuff.
All right, now I'm starving here. Okay, let's take a break. What else is new, right? We'll be right back.
Welcome back. I'm Lauren Coleman here with Eric Kildon, Monique Robinson and Stacy Spivey.
What's your little mood there, Lauren? Welcome back. Yep, I like that. All right, welcome all of you watching on the 4 to 5 right here on WFMY News 2. Don't forget, Firestick, Roku and of course, our app for your TV, phone or your tablet.
Well, let's go ahead and get to your 4 to 5 roundup. Well, let's go ahead and get to your four to five roundup this afternoon. Guilford County's indoor mask mandate is no longer in effect after county commissioners voted to lift the mandate last night. Businesses are now in charge of whether or not they'll require masks. Guilford County employees and visitors to county buildings must still wear a mask indoors under the county manager's authority. County officials emphasize Guilford County schools need to continue wearing masks under the school board's mask mandate. Now, masks are also still required for federal transportation such as buses, trains, and airports under the federal mask mandate. The jury began deliberating today in the murder trial of Kyle Rittenhouse. Rittenhouse is accused of shooting and killing two men and injuring a third during protests last year in Kenosha, Wisconsin. 500 National Guard members are prepared to step in as needed depending on the jury's verdict. The 18-year-old faces life in prison if convicted. Two Duke basketball players were arrested on DWI-related charges over the weekend. One of them is Coach K's grandson. North Carolina Highway Patrol Sergeant Chris Knox confirms 20-year-old Michael Servarino was pulled over near Hillsboro Sunday night because of a stop sign violation. During the stop, a trooper noticed signs of impairment and confirmed the driver and passenger had been drinking. The passenger also faces charges. He is one of the, one of the class of 2021's most coveted recruits and is expected to be picked early in the upcoming NBA draft. Governor Roy Cooper said he will sign the legislative budget once it reaches his desk. The budget includes pay raises and bonuses for teachers and most state employees. There are also additional funds for businesses still recovering from the pandemic and expansion for high-speed internet. The budget did not include Medicaid expansion, which is something Governor Cooper has pushed for in the past.
More or less, the weather story is focused on the change in temperatures. Warmer day by day. Tomorrow, expecting it to be 71. Tonight, more so early tomorrow morning, we're going to be in the low 40s. But we'll take that nice big old jump about 30 degrees by the afternoon into some nice old 70s. So as we go throughout the course of this week, these temperatures certainly enough going to be warming up. Having a little bit of trouble with my clicker, but temperatures are going to be warming up over the next several hours. And by the afternoon tomorrow, we'll see some upper 60s, low 70s, and kind of similar trend as we go throughout the day on Thursday. Temperatures warming back on up. One thing to keep an eye out throughout this week will be that partial lunar eclipse happens very, very little times throughout the last 100th century. This is the longest time since we've had one of these partial lunar eclipses because of the fact that you have to have that nice alignment with the moon as well as the earth and the sun. So when you take a look at 4:03 a.m., if you're a very early riser on Friday, you should be able to see this lunar eclipse, one of the longest that we've seen, like I said, in several hundred years. That full moon also has to be the timing of it. So we need that full moon in order for us to get it. And that full beaver moon will definitely certainly be on the rise Friday morning. So again, that partial lunar eclipse, something that will be illuminating the sky. And if you're out early, early, we should be able to see it across the triad. More details with weather coming up.
Well, Thanksgiving kits were distributed to Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools' families today. The district gave families snacks, school supplies, and even board games to enjoy over the holiday break. School officials say this is the first time the school system is closed for the full week of Thanksgiving. Those kits were created by staff and will be given to 365 families. Guilford County Schools, by the way, will be remote next Monday and Tuesday and then off for the rest of Thanksgiving week. The school board decided to give students and staff the days off with no live learning after hearing about high levels of stress among the community. Students will log into their courses from home to complete missing work on those days.
If you're in charge of cooking dinner for Thanksgiving, financial experts say this year's feast may hurt your wallet. According to the American Farm Bureau, the average cost of a Thanksgiving dinner last year was $47. This year, dinner is expected to go up 5%. Certified financial planner Matt Logan says this rise is due to inflation.
I would recommend planning out your shopping experience. Cutting coupons every once in a while can always help. And shop now versus last minute. And that way, you're not paying last-minute price hikes at your grocery store.
In addition to rising prices, Janay Adams with Depth Sucks University says some Thanksgiving items will be harder to find.
Definitely suggest comparing different prices. And now it makes it even easier because a lot of your favorite grocery stores are online. So you don't have to go shop by shop or anything like that. You can just get online, look at the different stores and say, okay, this is where I'm going to get my turkey from. This is where I'm going to get my macaroni, my macaroni and cheese. And then go out to those stores and buy what you need to save that money.
You know, times are ticking. Have any of you started grocery shopping for Thanksgiving dinner?
Way behind.
No.
Way behind.
Not at all. I think though, that I don't really have to do any cooking this year. I got lucky, so I might just be going to enjoy it, not have to worry about all that stuff.
We have, there will be, counting my family, there will be 11 people and four dogs at my house for Halloween.
And four dogs.
For Thanksgiving, yes.
They get their own plates too, right?
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, that's a lot of mouths to feed. You know, they said that you can consider, you know, like doing a potluck or maybe even ordering food to help cut back on some of that cost. So something to think about.
Yeah, the bad part for me is that I don't really do as much of the cooking, but because my mother-in-law's incredible with that, but then I'm on dish duty afterwards. And 11 people, and then my wife breaks out like the good stuff, right? So you've got all these extra place settings. It takes me about an hour and a half to get all those things because you got to hand wash them, right?
Yeah, because you want to bring out like the nice dishware.
The good stuff, which sees light of day once a year, by the way.
Yeah.
All right, Tanya Rivera joins us now.
Yes, yes, you are seeing a turkey in a hot tub. Why would I even put up this ridiculousness? Because someone asked about thawing a turkey in a hot tub. True story.
And sometimes they find strange ways to thaw their turkey. I've heard of them trying to put it in the dishwasher through a cycle. Somebody called and asked if they could put it in the hot tub to thaw it quicker. And really, the best way is to put it in the refrigerator.
Yeah, I got to talk to a Butterball Turkey Hotline expert a few years ago, and boy, did she have some stories. The Butterball Hotline has been around since 1981, so you know, there's a whole bunch of stories out there. And in 2021, you can now call, text, or chat online. Ask any question you want.
A dishwasher?
I know, right?
Yeah, but the hot tub, that's disgusting.
I know. And you think to yourself, who really thought that? And yet...
It happened.
It happened.
Yeah. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Scary. But it does.
So the hot tub story, the dishwasher, those sound unbelievable, but there actually is more. Hopefully, we can pull this up in time so that we can really tell you about it. It's the big question story. So in this day and age, there's a lot of pressure to have a really good engagement story. Everybody see Adele's engagement story that was on there?
That was awesome.
Okay, all right, how do you compete with that, right? Okay, so here's the Butterball version.
A gentleman wanted to propose and he wanted to place the ring in the stuffing in his turkey. So it'd be a really fantastic surprise. Well, we cautioned him against that. We just thought it was too risky and we helped him work through another way to surprise his fiancee.
Seriously, people.
Yeah.
And imagine cleaning that ring out. After it was in turkey juice and giblets and whatever else.
Well, then what is it going to do? You got to keep scooping and hope the right scoop goes, you know, the right plate.
What if you accidentally ate the ring?
Or chipped your tooth because you're just chowing away.
Any of those things could have happened, which is why the turkey person on the hotline was like, how about we find another way to do this?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah, okay. Fun fact, did you know that Butterball is actually headquartered here in North Carolina?
Oh, I didn't know I knew that.
I didn't know that either.
They are in Kings Mountain, which is near Garner. So the Butterball people are like right here in our own backyard, sort of, kind of. All right, so tonight, Butterball Hotline experts are here on WFMY News 2. They're once again, this time answering your questions live, not just my questions, but your questions. You get to text that question in anonymously. So if you got a hot tub-like question, you can text it in and no one's going to laugh at you because they won't know it's you. 336-379-5775. The Butterball expert will be here from 5:30 to 5:45. We'll be right back. We'll be right back.